Okay. December 12 at 7:39 PM, call the zoning board appeals meeting order. Roll call, we have Book Maloney, Steve Ford, Bill Glenn, Martin Masinda. Application for receipt. Public, open the public hearing. CBA dash 24 dash 3, 25, Mahayok Road. Variance request from section 8.0 to permit construction of a two bay vehicle service garage addition within the required front and sideline setbacks and to exceed the maximum allowable building and pavement coverage on an existing non-conforming lot of record. Zone design commercial owner CLB Wellington LLC. Okay. If you would want to introduce yourself and then tell us about your project.
So Christopher Barra, owner of the service station there. For some time, you know, the business has been growing, you know, it's getting bigger. So really to expand on some larger base, mainly for some more truck repairs. We're seeing a rather large influx of that since the dump station has come about. So the plan for is just to put two bays on. You were just additional space for repair.
Yeah, see, if you have a plan, I'm sure it's the same plan in front of us.
Yeah. I don't know if you, I got the full copy.
Yeah, he's got, we have some, there's architecturals, but
Yeah, there's architecturals.
And then that's in front of you is what it shows the site.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, now you're asking for a frontline variance, a sideline variance, and also variance to the same permeable surface?
Yeah, it's, so what's there now on the surface where that piece would be going is pretty much hard right now.
So how much of, how much of it is existing asphalt?
Uh, so it probably would take up probably about 75% of what space we would be using as asphalt there right now.
And you'll be adding any more asphalt with this?
No, um, we probably wouldn't do any more asphalt unless it's something required, just because it, it just doesn't hold up. We've had so many people, they turn around in their yard, it just, it takes it up to nothing.
Let's see, where's the septic system?
The septic is, it's on the other side.
Across the street or the other side?
Yeah, up the end, the other end. I'm actually, I was gonna, um, actually, well, it was on the backside. The septic, I mean, it's pretty much consistent of like, uh, like a system, system, you know, like
Hey, if you were trying to figure out what you're, what you, what you would be requesting for the setback from the frontline. Judge that distance.
The, the distance in the front?
Yeah, so with the setback from the frontline, I see it hits 50 foot line is back here. So I can't quite tell coming forward from that.
It's 24.8.
Oh.
That would be the proximity of the
Okay, so that, because it's, okay, the 25 point. Then they'd be looking for 24.8 feet of relief.
That's how, well, so
50 foot, is that what, is that what I'm getting? See the closest here, this one's 20, 24 to the, oh yeah, 24.8. So they'd be looking for 25.4.
So, yeah, well, the the DC zone requirement for front yard is 25.
DC, don't
Yeah, so that, one of the things that's on here is that this map shows the proposed and existing, but in the required, it's referencing the R80 zone. And in 2023, it was rezoned to commercial. So it's a DC zone.
Oh, okay, so I'm thinking.
So you're thinking R8.
R8.
Yeah, so, so after, after he purchased the property, he got a zone change from the commission to his end, tail end of 22. So it's DC. So the DC zone requirements are, are different, and that's the front. So the front yard is 25, the rear yard is 25, and the side one.
And then the other one changed the permeable surface asphalt, go then that's 25% each, correct?
So our 80 is 15, but goes up a little bit for the, for, for along this. So so he's currently at 52, exists at 52. And I can bring it up on the screen if you want to see it, and then
I'm just trying to think of what, if he did make a motion, what numbers would, yeah, put into that motion? Because he'd be looking at already closest point, 8.7 on the existing. I can't, either way, getting old. That is structured, we'd be looking at 24.8. Setbacks, you know, you'll be looking for those.
The other thing that I, you have is the, the green cards?
Yep.
The certified mail receipt.
Mark, when you're ready, I would just like to ask the applicant a question.
Sure, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what what they'd be asking for, but please do.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt you in that calculation. I know that's not, not easy. Chris, could you let me know exactly what your what your hardship is for the application, please?
I mean, it's mainly, like I typed it up there for you guys, but it's really, it's not really a conforming prop because of the, the small size of it, you know, we need to, we need to grow the business. So I mean, just by being a small, a small piece, it's only the reason for variance.
Right, but the existing, existence of a non-conforming lot business is, is not a hardship. Could you tell me what your hardship is, please?
Well, I mean, it's just the growth of the business has, has gotten bigger. You know, I mean, in order for me to stay growing a business and maintaining a business, need to really be able to add to the structure. You know, it's kind of just working outside all the time on this stuff. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of jobs we toss aside because, you know, I don't want to have trucks outside for two, three days on end, working outside or something, you know, so it's kind of slows our business down. But it just that itself, just the loss of revenue that I'm losing from not being able to have additional space to provide for customers.
Right, I'm just having a hard time figuring out exactly what that hardship is. You can't create your own hardship for, from more business per se. You know, you gotta have a bona fide hardship in order to be approved for the variance. My second question is your, your limited liability company is dissolved. So the application isn't really an entity. Looks like it dissolved in July of 2024. I mean, that's just, that's just a technical issue, but yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, those were my two questions.
Is that something you can provide him, you know, for the
Uh, Ralph came in to me as he heads up to your slide.
Yeah. We'll have to surprise him of it, but still, no. Rick's raised some good questions of in my experience, you have to have a, a literal hardship. I'm thinking, you know, your backyard drops off at a, you know, precipitous rate. Something that you source, you know, that, from the standpoint of the business, I understand, however, you know, we're in the business of the zoning regulation. There have been some other issues raised here. So sort of be twixt and between, in my view, at this point. Your size, lots of hardship. What is the total?
It's, the, the property is 31,000 square feet, and so it's a little over.
Just that itself is, that's hard to do anything. Well, I mean, it is what it is, and I guess it is, in fact, that that's what you got. That's what you got.
Just a couple of comments, if you would. Yeah, you know, when you bought the lot in 2018, I mean, we had that discussion with you about exactly what that lot was, what it contained. It was a very small lot, a very difficult lot to deal with, obviously. You know, I, I don't, we want to encourage small businesses to grow in this town. It's, it, it's really one of the number one priorities in the town, but I'm not so sure that this is the correct vehicle, the zoning board of appeals, with no bona fide hardship for you to really address that need. You might have to go back to zoning, and, and I don't know if Mike had any suggestions for the applicant as to what this might might look like as a zoning application or a special permit. I mean, now you're in a commercial zone. Are there other things that you could do in that zone? Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, maybe we could, you know, tweak it here or there, but you, you're really asking for not just a variance, but a change in the site, additional building, non-pervious sub, you know, surfaces changing. You're edging into the front and the sideline, so I'm, I'm not sure that this is the right venue for you. Maybe Mike could, could comment on that. Thank you.
So he will have to go to both the planning and zoning commission and the wetlands commission as additional stops after this. So because of the the, the way of the lot is shaped, when we were looking at this, you know, when I explained to him that he would have to basically make a stop with each commission. So even, even with the adjustment of the front yard setback to reflect the DC zone, that brings his, his front yard setback you know, to a point where I think that he could probably, I don't know, we need to look at, talk to his design professionals. And I, my suspicion is they could accommodate the adjustment so that he perhaps didn't need the front yard setback. But because of the, the rear portion of the property, I, I don't think he could, he could do any type of adjustment to get the rear of the building out of, out of the setback. And then with the, the pervious coverage, I, I don't know if there would be a way for him to adjust the coverage on the property to offset the 2% change. Cause he's, he's at 52, he's proposing to go to 54. So it would just be a matter of determining if there was a way to, you know, get rid of equivalent of 2% coverage. So those are things we'd have to look into be able to get answers, you know, to those types of questions, if that could be adjusted. If, if your senses that this request is too much, or, or you have concerns about it and want him to go back to the drawing board, those are things we, I have to look at, or we have to see if they could be tweaked.
Thank you, Mike, that's very helpful.
Yes.
I gave you a letter because I was meeting upstairs.
Yeah, no, we're just, we're just hearing.
Yeah.
27 initial road.
And, and for people that aren't here, if you could explain your position to us.
Well, I, 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 I'm not trying to take a pro or con position. All I was doing was reviewing it
Yeah.
as I would when I was on the chairman of planning and general. One of the things, you're talking about setbacks, and Mike, you know, the regulations is when you're talking a zone boundary, then R80 is on the other side. I recall a difference in side yards in setbacks, I may be confusing it with screening.
So there is
Screening is, it's not pertinent here. If it's setbacks, it is.
So there are different standards for, in the table for zone and lot, and so what you're referring to is so the
She's basically surrounded by R80.
And, yeah, and so in the, in the DC zone, the, the front yard minimum under lot, under zone, is, is 50 and under lot is 25. I have had different people explain how this has been applied over the years differently. And I, I, I do not understand how that carries across the board. So the, I haven't spoken to his engineer or how this was prepared. I don't know if the assumption of that 50 was because it's the more restrictive of those two. Um, because it would be that, and then, then it goes to the side yard, which is 75 for the zone, 25 for the lot. I I'm not sure if that's a zone line because the zone lines follow property lines, so that doesn't necessarily make any sense to me. That part, I don't know, and I, I'm, yes. Not sure exactly what the application is.
So I can tell you from my planning and zoning experience, a lot of those things were derived because you have floating zones for all the designs. Land them on the ground when someone wants to do something. One of the concerns was, right, carve out an area of R80, call it industrial. Okay, the lot numbers in that table are for lots completely within the zone. However, the setbacks in screening requirements for the perimeter of the zone gets more restrictive because of what's on the other side. What were, what the intent was when that teletable was developed was to try to project Jason residential properties from a use that's going to be much more intensive than a residential use. Within a, a DC zone or within an industrial zone, your neighbor is still an industrial use. So now you're not so much concerned about how much space separates. That was the thinking when that table was developed. And I was on the PCC when those regulations came. Uh-oh, again, you know, I'm not against this. I would love to see a successful business on a, a marginally developable piece of property and, and hope they succeed. But we have to be mindful of the expansion of a business that's already non-conforming. And one of the goals into the regulations, with the zoning regulations, is to reduce all non-conforming uses and, and lots. Not increase. But it's, I mean, I, I'll, like I said, I have a lesson with it for what he's trying to accomplish there. And, and I hope there's a way to do it. I just want to be mindful of the impacts on the adjacent R80. And, and who knows, what the future may bring for the parcel behind this property is more than likely going to be a design commercial use in some, at some future time. We don't know that now, though. It could just as easily become a subject.
So are we within the buffer zone, or are we within the lot, the lot buffer? So are we the 25 feet or are we the 75 feet? Do you know that answer, Mr. Toulis?
I think, well, we work hard, if we were looking at a, a more substantial zone, yes, that's what we'd be looking at. It's the 75, the, the greater number. If on the other side of that line is residential.
Which I believe it is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're asking for a set, you know, the setback is 75 feet on the rear and the side.
It was off the top of my head.
Okay.
I just know the rationale behind what was developed in those regulations.
Yeah, makes sense. Yeah, fascinating. Yeah, thank you.
So presently, the back corners are 14.8 and 10.8. So depending on whose view of the, is it 25 or 75, and therefore we work with these numbers plus time. If there's a definitive hardship, I don't know, I'm the numbers are rattling.
Right, Bill, and, and we shouldn't struggle with that. That, that's really the applicant's responsibility to come at us and be specific about exactly what he wants or what he doesn't want. You know, we can't, you know, it's, it's not our job to figure that out. You know, you tell us as the applicant, what do you want? And, and we'll see if it's appropriate. Thank you.
So if I can interject, I, I think that, I mean, we have a couple of questions that are lingering. Well, how the regulations should be applied, what the requirement is, and therefore whether you're issuing a variance of X or Y, and then some other comments from the commission about is this sort of the the only option? And particularly when you're looking at the DC requirements, at least within the lot, so like, for example, we have 75 foot, if we, if we go with that and the assumption that it applies based upon how it was discussed, the 75 foot would apply, but they're also, I mean, the, the, the front yard setback were at 24.8, the requirement would be 25. So if tomorrow that DC zone change came in for the property behind it, the zone, that zone buffer, the 75 foot requirement goes away, but that 25 foot still applies, right? If this plan can be adjusted by a couple of inches, the front yard setback no longer is necessary. And if the DC zone change happens to the adjacent parcel, the non-conformity goes away entirely. I, I think that based upon the discussion, the fact that we've got some question about the regulations and looking at some of, just some of these things in here, I'm not nearly well enough equipped to be able to try to throw through this, I trust my own brain. At, at this point, my recommendation would be that you don't make any decisions, continue the hearing, and allow me to synthesize this to the applicant so that he can prepare sort of a, a response.
I, I agree with those. I wouldn't even know what it would have on us or what we'd put together for motion.
Right.
At this point, it would be, and so I was trying to look at in the beginning, and it was like, I couldn't even figure out where to go.
Right, and so like, one of the questions, which, which is raised in this, which I can confirm, but we can get the other piece of that is the DC zone change did happen. The commission approved it, like I said, but I, I can get the particulars on that. There was a special exception that came here for the dealers and repairs license way back when the property was purchased. That statute has since been changed, so those types of requests don't come before you anymore, but I think he was the last one that was here.
So I, I recall that scenario when, right, we started this.
So I, I feel like, at least from my comfort level, I would, might be able to say, here are the things that apply, here are the things that don't apply. And even if everything was through Mahayok, and you thought this is great, there would potentially need to be a tweet to the legal notice? Because if we advertise it as section eight and, and then um, there's another, there's another subsection that applies, we need to clarify that in the notice. So I think that belt and suspenders, just keeping it open and continuing to allow us to sort of complete the record and make sure that we have answered those questions before you make a decision.
I, I agree wholeheartedly.
I'm telling you, the, yeah. Are we saying it's 75 feet or 25?
He's trying to get back to, I think technically it's
No, no, I don't know.
I believe it's both, but I, but so on the planning and zoning side, we're going through the regulations, we have sort of a, a code analysis done, and we're, we're finding that there's certain things that are a little bit disconnected, but there's
Cause I mean, I'd, I'd be very shocked to see that that property doesn't try to go to DC in the next 30 days.
Right. So, and, and for you to, to understand, if the answer is a both, then then your options are to amend the request to reflect the, the 75 and the 25. Adjust the building by four inches to remove the 25 request entirely.
Yeah.
Or wait until the DC zone change goes forward, and then potentially it's not me, we can't see the future, but who knows what will happen with that property.
Anybody else there is proposal for that rear property?
I can tell you that the property owner has come into our office several times and said, I've been I can tell you that the property owner has come into our office several times and said, I've been instructed to see what the process would be. As it was being contemplated to go on the market, but that. You know, basically, for the purposes of this, your, your understanding of your world ends at the property line.
Yeah.
Um, from a, from a use perspective, because we don't know what will happen there. And so you don't want to make a decision based upon the future use of a property that's not within the confines of this application. But, but I want to be able to come back to you and say, there are several regulations that are cited. Five of the six apply, six of the six apply, eight of the six apply. The record needs to have those answers.
Yeah, we have to be definitive, uh. Right, in order to be accurate.
Um, so I, I. Can endeavor to, we'll do that. I'll meet with the applicant to make sure that we understand exactly what. Does apply so that we can come back and give you a full picture. And if we have to renotice so that it's clear what's being requested in interim when we come back in January. Do that.
No. Frank pointed out about your LLC.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta check that. That's, I know I had one dissolved right around that time, but it wasn't this one. It was a CLB enterprise and ICLB Wellington enterprise, so. That I got to look into for sure. But it, it shouldn't be. But that's the property I don't see that so much. Definitely take a look into that. It shouldn't be dissolved at all because I can be one who has to dissolve it and. So I gotta take a look at that. That was completely fiction, so.
I guess Ralph will. Enter your letter into.
Yes, it'll become part of the record.
In the record.
Um.
I could email it to.
I'll see, cause I got the application and get it on the board.
Yeah, okay, yeah. If you'd like to add or. Introduce your.
Oh, I'm Melissa Miller. I'm at fifty five Maholyak Road. I'm the property right up the road. From showcase. So I'm always very interested, um, in what's going on because there are wetlands and. It's always an impact, um, I'm not. Opposing, but I don't know enough yet about the project, so that's why I'm here, so I can understand what's going on.
Oh.
Yeah, I didn't really look at the map yet. And I hadn't had a chance to look at his letter yet. Oh, okay, this is a copy. I don't even.
I would add, and. Just as an observation. There's wetlands behind your property. Realistically, from a neighborly perspective. About talking regulations now, just saying. How the regulations would affect any future development of the property. The wetlands is going to. Really restrict that parcel from being developed very close to this parcel. Regardless of whether it goes DC or whether it stays residential, the wetlands. Buffer and the wetlands that exist are going to restrict the future development. Right, so the variance that you have ran for him now. Is, is kind of. You know, it's, it's. Awesome, not the eyes crossing the teeth as far as the legal record. For this parcel, but I don't think from a neighborly, neighborly perspective, it's going to be a future issue. Regardless of whether it should be seventy five or whether it should be twenty five, because. Going to have the distance separation between the next use. So that, that's kind of a benefit to his goal. And it's just adding my perspective. I mean. I've watched what happened to Red Knartz from when I was born.
Yeah.
I mean, if that place was, the property was much, much bigger and actually extended to the other side of eight and four.
And I do recall when they. Kind of redirected that whole intersection.
Multiple times that they have nibbled away at that parcel, just like they did with my grandfather's farm. Every time something changed on the highway, they came and took more land. And we didn't have much to say. So that's what happened here. This is why this parcel is so small. Because of the DOT. Blame it on them.
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Tullis is approaching a hardship here. You know, I mean, this is, this is how you would define the hardship if you were going to. Thank you.
And I mean, there was no, there was no way for him to even know what kind of impact it would have, whether or not the, the truck stop wasn't. I mean, it was in the works, but it wasn't, it wasn't. Fully granted or fully denied or hadn't really, so when you're buying a piece of property, you didn't realize that, you know, it could change the outlook. I mean. There are trucks in and out. I mean, I see it all the time where trucks break down. And it causes a lot of backup. It's, you know, it affects. The traffic that we deal with every day, and if there's somebody close that's working on these vehicles, I mean, I can't imagine working on a truck. I mean. Elements. But these truckers are relying on the, the most local garages. So that's, I mean, and like I said, I'm not, like I said, I'm not for or against or not, I'm just trying to find out. You know, what the impact is going to be on our weapons. That's, that's my big concern. Is the.
I'm all for supportive local business and certainly the expansion, but. That can't be classified as a hardship from our standpoint, so.
Yeah.
We've got, uh, you know, good counsel here all around, uh.
Yeah.
And, uh.
And I, and I completely get that. I completely get that. I just, you know, that was just my thing, you know, I mean, I know that doesn't change anything, but. You know, seeing the future, I mean, what if I bought my house, would I have bought that piece of property if I knew, I mean. And I was, and I was, and I was fighting. So what was the fine Jays before that? Like that was the fine Jays that tried to do the first time.
That was, yeah, that was ridiculous.
Regardless of, regardless of that, you know, did I ever think that? You know, that would, well, when, you know, did I ever think I was going to be at fifteen years of meetings, you know, um. But. You know, I am, I am very pro-business, but I'm also very pro-environment, so. And I'm only speaking, and I am on the board. Uh, finance and I'm only speaking on my own behalf, so like I don't want, I don't want to be, I shouldn't. Relate that, that I'm speaking on my own personal behalf, not anything to do with.
Oh, you're in a butter.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah, I am. I'm, I, literally my property is right there. It's the very first house up on Hollyack, so. Um, and, and it does, and like I said, you know, I mean, I. I am truly, you know, very much about the time thing, so.
So Melissa, if they, um, created those garages and they moved some of the vehicles inside. Um, how do you feel about that? How do you feel about this proposal? Are you, uh, I mean, maybe it's premature to ask you that question, but I, I wanted.
Want to ask.
Yeah, please.
You know, I mean. It is, it. I mean, I'm just looking at it for a perspective, though. I, you know. My boyfriend does work on trucks and I know them building their small building that they built in their, at their woodyard. Made a huge difference in working on the trucks. But like I said, it's too early for me to even really make. Any real assessment. I really haven't looked at the plans. I haven't looked at. I haven't really done my own assessments yet.
Yeah, thank you.
I wonder. How big this lot was before the state. Moved the road to the intersection. It went over to.
Used to, what I found on that used to stretch to just about the center of the highway. There was an in and an out there.
But I think before. Before it became, uh, the Wolvercross Parkway.
Right.
Um, which is going back, that was just a two lane road.
Right, yes.
And Kenisterius. Owned all the way over the temple. And it owned all the way down to my grandfather's farm.
It did a buck.
In fact. I think there was some exchange of land property between my grandparents and the Kensters. They own. I mean, this was, this was guys who came back from World War Two and started a business. That's, that's their history.
So that garage has been there.
I would say since. It's been there ever since I've been here.
That's a long time.
I, I think the map we found inside this is playing the place out upstairs.
Have we had a Florida?
I think it was thirty seven.
The building shows was built in thirty nine.
Yeah, thirty nine, yeah.
So that was, the building was there before it even was, interstate highways were even on the radar.
Yeah.
Or turnpikes were on the radar.
And over cross to.
Cause most of the Wolvercross kind of ended in, uh, the border area.
Okay, so. Where is? We're kind of at a standstill. And wind up, uh. And wind up leaving the public hearing open until we can. Find out a little bit more about it. Exactly what relief that you're looking for. And maybe kind of firming up what your hardship. Is, and I'm sure Mike, Mike can help you get your direction on where your relief will come from or what you're reading.
It's, uh, so motion to continue the hearing. The next meeting will be January ninth. So assuming you're all available, hopefully.
Yep, sounds good.
Yeah. Okay, so just motion.
We have a motion to.
I'll, I'll second that motion, Mark.
Okay, seconded, uh. All fair?
Hi.
Okay, so, um, I guess. You'll wind up getting in touch with.
Yes.
I'll, I'll let you know what we need to do.
Yeah. Try and tune it, we'll find Tony, we'll call him something.
Just meet over next Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, they left the.
Oh, yeah, so.
It's a similar issue all along.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so we, we're going to.
Well, I think you've got a copy of the annual schedule. Yeah, we have the annual schedule and it came in our, our package. Do you have any copy? The annual, hey, do we have to vote on this?
I can't see the future.
Yeah, we get a vote on it, Mark.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a motion to accept the annual schedule?
All moves that ZBA twenty twenty five schedule updated on eleven five twenty twenty four is adopted.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Hey, all in favor? Hi, hi.
Hi.
Okay. Uh, approval of the minutes. Did everybody get a chance to win the minutes or, so?
I think it's, um, does anybody need a copy?
Back there building the house for me, provide some speed right now. Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes. I saw a moment. We have a second, I'll second. All favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Correspondence. Public participation. Seeing none, we'll hold on. That report to discuss. Being, so more CBA related. Okay. And, uh, adjournment. I move to adjourn. I'll second. All fair?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you guys.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, have a merry.
Merry Christmas, thank.